Good evening, everyone. This is our 5:30 PM presentations. You are at the City of Desert Hot Springs and this is our regular meeting. Our first presentation tonight is going to be by the Coachella Valley Volunteers in Medicine Program. Carolyn's here and she will introduce herself and she has about 10 minutes here to give us a presentation on the Volunteers in Medicine.
All right, thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Caroline Broski and I am a volunteer at the Coachella Valley Volunteers for Medicine. I do administrative work in presentations such as this. And I'm representing Doug Moran, who is the Director for the clinic. Some of you probably have met him. I think he was here a couple of years ago and gave a presentation. There are five packets for each council member in front of you that will have these same slides there in front of you. And I'll go over, I'll probably have time to go through most of them. What we're asking from you is to provide to agencies here in Desert Hot Springs information about what we do. And so how we can get that information out to our residents. So many don't know what we have, what we have to offer or even where we are. So we have patients who travel, you have 154 people here in Desert Hot Springs that come out to our clinic. If they were to take a bus from here, it takes them two and a half hours. We have a bus stop that's right across the street. But many of them, hopefully they can come from work, get an appointment that allows them to come in from work. We're open on Tuesday through Friday and so the appointments go. We have different doctors that come in and volunteer their time. So depending on what the person, who the person needs to see, they will see a primary care doctor or if they need dental work, they come in for that. So that bus ride is, you know, they will do it. I mean, if they have no, no healthcare, no insurance as a place for us to come to. Okay, this is our building. It is on 48th Avenue near Jackson, if you're familiar at all with Indio. We pay $1 a year rent. The building has been there for six years now. So our mission is to provide free healthcare for people who are in low income, have no health insurance or just underinsured. They do have to prove that they live in the area. The whole entire Coachella Valley is what we cover. I would say primarily we're going to get from Indio in that area also just because of the convenience of being able to get there. So they do have to provide information that they do live in the area, what their income is, where they work. Sometimes we just don't get all that information from their employment, but we try to do those best we can. So we provide medical and dental care, also orthopedics, OB-GYN, depending upon the need that they have. And they have health education, different programs. So there's councils that come in and talk to people after they've had their medical appointment, if they have a need to talk to someone else, to talk about whether it's diet or eating or family things, because we do provide social services for them also. And twice a week, there is a group that go out to the homeless. There's certain places that they go to meet them and the kind of the homeless that are out that kind of know where to go, because they kind of stay in the same places and we take care of quite a few of them. So because of the conditions around the United States and everyone's health, we noticed that, that the high rate of diabetes, of high blood pressure and cholesterol, we obviously see those same things in the patients that show up for us. And so they started a program two years ago, what they continued on this year, is to help them lower their A1C rate. I'm sure you've seen commercials that show you what that is. And talk to them about their eating habits, about the food that they provide for their families, how they can better improve their health, so that hopefully they can get off some of the medications that they have to take in order to deal with that. So again, we have that program going on also. And so we have close to 300 volunteers that come out and that includes about 13, over 13,000 hours, total hours that are provided. And that's not just the doctors and the nurses and the nurse practitioners. We have high school students who are in medical programs that come out and volunteer their time and do administrative work, find out if this is a career they might want to get into. So we have assistants, we have some interns that also do come and give some, some help to us. So the only people that are paid for that is seven, seven people, including the director obviously gets paid for that. And this is the area, obviously you can see the cities that are in there that we provide. But it's everything Coachella Valley, so it goes all the way down, Salt and Sea. Our total number of patients, you know, we have about 3,000 visits, total visits. And so the patients we have are 1,000 for regular district, regular patients that come in, any additional patient content, contents, if people have to come back, if they need to have MRI, CAT scan, something like that, and they have that, then they do a follow-on with us. But we do send them out to the hospitals to be able to get those, those tests done for them. And you can see the stats of how many men and women. And we do start at 18, so it's for adults only. And then here's just a little bit about, but the category, primary care is, is primarily what we provide and other programs that we have. Employment stats. On where our residents, if they're employed, you know, it's like half and half. Some of them we don't, like I said, unknown is most likely, the people that are homeless. And then the type of work that they do. Restaurant agriculture, domestic services, probably the hotels that you have here, the restaurants that you have here, they're working in those, in those places in construction. And here are the organizations, including the City of Desert Hot Springs gives a donation to us, provides us some, some money for, for our, being able to, to do our business how we do it. We have, we are a nonprofit organization, so we don't get any money outside. Our biggest thing is a wine auction we have and this one's in March. You do have a flyer that's about that and we raise about $200,000 for that, that auctions that's held out at the Thunderbird and I believe that's in Rancho Mirage. So here's the organizations that do provide for us, that help us take care of those of us who, those of, that don't have the care and the need that they have for their health. And again, individuals, community health. So we ask that, that everyone take that in consideration for so, some people that you may know that may need this care, that don't think that they have it anywhere and that it's available to them. And again, Doug Moran is available to talk to. He would like to talk to anyone who's interested in finding out about more, more about what we do. If you happen to live in the area, other than, I would imagine everyone lives in Desert Hot Springs, that's the idea. But you may know somebody that lives in other areas that may be near Indio, maybe a retired medical doctor or a dentist that would be willing to give their time and come out to the clinic, because it's, I think it's a very valuable, very valuable thing to do. And it's just makes you feel good when you volunteer and see how much people would appreciate what you do for them, even if it's filing or answering the phone. It's all very well needed and it's very much appreciated by the, the patients that we do that have come in. And that's all I have unless you have something else?
Great, any questions?
So how many of our residents do you think don't end up making it there over transportation issues?
You know, that's hard to say. We do have 146, which is a significant number. About 1,000 of them come from the Indio area, which makes sense. It's easy for them to get there. So 146, I don't know how many of them, I'm not sure that they really keep track of how many have had, have to take a bus. I do know there have been times when they have to cancel because they just can't get there.
Are these at certain times of the year that you're doing this or is it?
It's all year round. It's all year round, Tuesday through Friday, nine till five. So they can make their appointment. They do need to make an appointment. It's not a walk-in clinic. So they do need to make an appointment with that, especially if they have something that's ongoing. They may need to talk to an OB-GYN doctor or a orthopedic, they've got back issues, hip issues or something, they may, so they need to call ahead of time. They fill out an application. So they have, obviously we have it in English and in Spanish to fill out the application, provide the paperwork that we need in order to, to validate that they do live here in the, in the area.
All right, so as council members, we run into people who reach out, they need some help, don't know where to go. So you are a resource to send them if they need some kind of medical issue.
Yes, and the phone number in the information you have, if however you get that word out to agencies that you have that they can call, and there's always English and Spanish speakers there that can answer all their questions for them. I'm sure they can probably go online and get the application if they have a computer and able to do that. But they probably would send one to them if they want to have one sent to them to fill that out. But they do have to bring it back into the, into the clinic.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming out and doing this. We've had this presentation a couple of times over the last couple of years and it's always wonderful to hear what you're doing and what the, how many residents are actually using it. So I think we will possibly reach out to you when we have maybe some fairs and stuff going on for our community and maybe help find travel for them to get there. I mean, that's probably the biggest hurdle that a lot of our residents have to get over is finding a way to get there.
Yeah, that's it. And if it takes you two and a half hours in a bus to get there, that's, you know, that's almost impossible to do. Now, if you have vendor events, have health fairs of any kind, we always like to come to those and we'll have a table and hand out information.
Awesome.
So if you have anything like that, we do that on occasion too. I'm happy to come out there for those.
Got something in the works here, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, all right. And Doug's phone number is there, it's easy enough to do. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. Our next presentation tonight is the City Employee Service Recognition and Pam Muse is going to meet me at the podium and we're going to give some recognitions out.
So every year, the City of Desert Hot Springs likes to recognize employees that have reached milestone dates with the city, employment with the city. So tonight, we're recognizing some employees that have been with the city for five and for 10 years. So Tina Bright for five years. Stephanie Zamora for five years. Miguel Preciado for 10 years. And Marius Stuhler for 10 years. We have some employees who couldn't make it tonight, but I still want to recognize them. Christopher Sossier for five years. Charles Maynard for five years. Christopher Tooth for five years. And Jose Ochoa for five years.
And we're going to be recessed until 6 o'clock. Good evening, everyone. City of Desert Hot Springs.
City Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the city council and the city council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board. This is February 4th, 2020, and this is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths.
Present.
And Mayor Mads.
Anybody from the ministerial fellowship would like to give any invocation tonight? Would any council members like to give any invocation tonight? All right, with that, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Betts, you'll lead us tonight.
Please place your hand over your heart and join me in a salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other things.
Our next item is the city attorneys to report on closed session. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, we have no reportable items tonight.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take approval of the agenda. At this time, the city council may amend the order of the agenda and approve the consent calendar in whole. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar? With that, I'll entertain them. Is there anybody who would like to speak on anything on the consent calendar in the audience? That said, I'll take a motion or accept a motion. There's a motion by Mr. Betts and a second by Mr. Gardner. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the public comments. If this is your first time here, will be taking public comments. This is on items not on the agenda. If you're here for an agenda item, you have to wait till that agenda item. I have two blue speaker cards. If you want to speak in public comments tonight on items not on the agenda, you may fill out a blue speaker card back there. At this time pursuant to Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. Our first speaker tonight is Eddie Johnson, followed by our second speaker, Barbara Eastman.
Now it is. My name is Eddie Johnson, Veterans Park caretaker, and I do a lot for veterans up here. This is my first time this year for being up here. And you know, a year ago, I didn't think I'd be here, and gee, I'm still here, so it's a blessing for that. And I'm almost fully healed for what I had. I want to bring up first, we're going to do a, my car club is doing a special car show this Saturday in Indian Wells to raise money for the Desert Cancer Foundation, and I hope everyone can come and attend that if they'd like to. It's at nine o'clock, it starts at the Indian Wells Tennis Gardeners on the corner of Miles and Washington. Like I say, we raised money for the Desert Cancer Foundation, and might be something nice too with Desert Hot Springs might donate something for that foundation too. They help veteran, they help people that are in need of treatment, that don't have a lot of money, that issue $50,000 grants for that, and it's always nice to have. Another thing's coming up, Riverside County Fair. It's going to be held at the Indian Wells Fairgrounds from the 14th to the 23rd of February, and on the 17th, they're honoring veterans again at 5:30 in the evening at the pageant stage. That's also President's Day, and they're going to have a parade that morning. But I'm more interested in honoring the veterans. Any veteran that comes to the Riverside County Fair between the 14th and 23rd will have free entry and can have three, up to three guests come in with them for free. And they've made 2,000 dog tags, so veterans are always nice to get dog tags when they come in. I just hope somebody from the council and other people who residents can come and see that happen. And also on Palm Drive, I love the way the street is, they buried the wires today, those guys work six days a week, I don't even know if they have a vacation. When are they going to stripe it? And I think it looks awesome, and thanks for everything.
Thanks, Eddie. Barbara Eastman is our last speaker tonight, second call.
At council, mayor, staff, I'm here representing the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club. We're having our annual fashion show on March the 7th at Miracle Springs at 12 noon. Tickets are $40. All of our proceeds go to scholarships for our kids here in town. We've been with Desert Hot Springs for 67 years. Very proud of this organization, they do so much for our community and for our kids. So all come out and join us, we're having a great fashion show by Stein Mart, and it's going to be guys and girls this year, and I believe some of the council will be modeling. So come and join us, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Barbara. That's all the speaker cards I have for public comments. If anybody else would like to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight? All right, we'll close public comments at this time and move on to city manager's report. Our assistant city manager is acting city manager today. Our deputy city manager is at a conference, and our city manager's off today for doctor's appointment. So she gets to hold the, the city together for this whole day.
Finally. First, I'd like to ask Chief Henson if he can provide you all with an update on the SNIP bus.
We're currently negotiating, and we're going to be signing a contract to keep the SNIP bus for the rest of the fiscal year. That's once a month for four hours. What the SNIP bus does, it's a mobile unit that comes out, does microchipping, spaying, neutering, and vaccinations. They also do nail trims, e-collars, they hand out some pain meds for nominal price. And the biggest thing that they do is obviously spaying, neuter, but also the microchips, which is very important, it's getting the animals back to their owners. So we're excited about finally getting a contract with them to get through this fiscal year.
Thank you, Chief Henson. I'd also like to ask our public works manager, Nick Hager, if he can provide the community with an update on the Palm Drive Street Improvement Project.
Thank you. The first updates for ATP Cycle 3 Phase 1, this is Palm Drive from Camino Aventura to Two Bunch Palm Trail. The city is currently working with the contractor to make the necessary adjustments and repairs to the streets in Phase 1. The newly installed 34 SCE streetlights in Phase 1 have been energized. Night inspection was performed to verify all lights are working. Next is the ATP Cycle 3 Phase 2, which is Palm Drive from Two Bunch Palm Trail to Pearson Boulevard. The contract has been awarded to All American Asphalt. Construction is scheduled to start in March. Next update is for the signal installation project. This is for Palm Drive and Desert View and Pearson and Choya. The contractor has potholed to fill the, the contractor has potholed to find the exact locations for the poles, and the contractor has ordered the poles. This is my update.
Thank you. And then finally, I'd like to ask Roberta Cernick, our executive program manager, to provide an update on a grant that we just recently received.
Yes, so in 2019, the city applied for a grant that was funded by the state homeland security, and we were awarded $4,266 in funding to offer two CERT classes to the community free of charge. And for those of you who don't know what CERT is, it's a Community Emergency Response Training, which is an initiative by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, intended to help citizens in assisting professional first responders during an emergency or disaster. Skills covered include first aid skills, radio introduction basics, search and rescue strategies, and other topics specific to our area. So stay tuned for class dates and additional details on this city's website and our Facebook page.
Awesome. Thank you. That concludes our updates.
Great news. And moving on to mayor and council member comments. Who wants to go first tonight? Mr. Betts, you're in the queue.
Thank you. I attended a function down in Palm Springs with Councilwoman Pye, and I'll let her, I'm sure she's going to cover that in detail, but it was interesting, it was talking about tiny home villages and what we can do as far as dealing with the homeless that are going on in the community. Also had, on the same subject here locally, I had a couple of business owners asked me to come down, they wanted to talk, and they've had problems with homeless panhandling inside the, you know, in their businesses and getting quite aggressive. And they, you know, they said, hey, it's really become a problem. And one of the businesses, they went into the store and just started helping themselves to everything, you know, snacks, donuts, whatever else, then made a mess and then left. And so, you know, just, it just crossed my mind that when Chief Mondray is with us, he always used to give a speech, you know, you give a dollar to somebody that's homeless, you're going to encourage more, you know, that's panhandling, you're going to give more, you're going to encourage more panhandling. But if you go down to Food Now, one of the food banks, and offer that same dollar, so much more can be done. And I know we're all really tempted to offer somebody some money from our hand to theirs, but you'll really do a lot more good if you can get people directed to these programs, and rather than, it's just such an aggravation for these businesses. So just briefly on the presentation down there in Palm Springs, the county is really stepping up the plate to provide some good guidance on housing and homeless, and it's a very complicated issue. Anyhow, I'll let you deal with that one better than I was able to. We've had some people on social media pointing out some graffiti, very large graffiti that's been popping up, and one of it was really bad, sawed at about 10 o'clock at night, so I thought to myself, you know, I wonder if, how easily I could get my hands on the roller, the paint, and the pan, to go cover it over. And I was amazed, I went into my garage, I found it like in a minute. I had it in the trunk of my car, and I went down to the graffiti, and I stopped to think, I was going to go paint over it. And I thought, you know, I've heard our graffiti tech say, gosh, when somebody paints over it, it's so much more work. To, so I thought better of it, and I didn't paint over it. But it causes our graffiti people so much more effort when they have to go over, not only cover the graffiti, but cover the attempt to cover over the graffiti. So if anybody out there is tempted to jump in and help by putting a patch of paint over some graffiti, thinking that helps, it really doesn't. Our guy was out there the very next morning, crack of dawn, it was gone, very few people saw it, and the way they put it on there is they color match and they blend. So anyhow, best just to leave it up to them, and I'm glad I didn't mess that one up. Met with a couple of prospective spa owners, two of them looking to either build a new boutique hot water spa or to renovate existing ones, and so they want to get a look at some properties, and we have several that are shuttered. I think at one time, we had 40 boutique spa hotels, now we have about 20. And so they wanted to see which ones were shuttered and had good wells. And then today in my meetings, I asked staff to develop a list of the shuttered properties so that that would be available, and so they said they would do that, so that's good news. This brings me to a subject on the boutique spa hotels. I was a little bit saddened by a decision out of the planning commission to allow an existing boutique spa hotel to be converted away from that use and to a rehab facility. Now, there's nothing wrong with rehab facilities, but we have all these shuttered boutique spa hotels that if we were going to take something and set up a facility like that, we could take one of those and take something that's inactive and make it active, rather than taking what has been an iconic, award-winning and much acclaimed spa, the Living Water Spa. And, you know, I understand somebody has a business, they want to sell it and, you know, get a return on it, make some money, but the concern I have is that we're going to go from being spa city to being rehab city, because I know there's this huge draw to go in and take our existing boutique spa hotels and set them up for that use. It's a very precious resource that we have with this hot water, and the city since its inception has been known as spa city for good reason. I think we need to develop a policy, and what I'd like to do, we have another agenda item later, you know, in the meeting, that was a result of the council deciding to put something on the agenda, I don't know exactly the process to do that, but I'd like to see if we could direct staff to start to take a look at some type of spa presentation or preservation issue or ordinance that would say if it's an existing working spa, there's limited, limited repurposing of that so that we don't lose, what do we have, about 20 now? You know, how long would it be before we lost them all? So anyhow, I'd like to take a look at that. Finally, you know, every city in Southern California is having an issue with petty crime. You know, I know we hear about it in our city, somebody, your neighbor's car gets stolen, or you run into something like that, and you think, oh, it's only here, it's not. You know, as we get out and interact with council members from all over Southern California, they all say the same, this crime explosion and petty crime is through the roof. And, you know, our police necessarily are looking at the part one serious crimes first, that's always their priority. And, but I'm just wondering, you know, does that mean that we have to let these petty crimes go? It's not petty when your car is stolen, especially if your car is your livelihood and your means to get to work. So I'm wondering if, you know, I pressed on this one privately for a long, long time, and now I wanted to see if maybe get the council behind some type of initiative to set aside some funding specifically for a petty crime patrol, watch, suppression effort, if it'd be something like bait cars. You know, I've had a guy call me, he says, I can't believe it, I was at the ATM at 5:00 in the morning, getting ready to go to work, got all my tools in my truck, and I turned my back of my truck, when I come back out, somebody had gone in and lifted a, you know, saw or a tool out of there. So I'm wondering if, you know, if our PD were there with that truck, and somebody did that and watched them and catch them and get some type of suppression on this. And certainly, I understand the job that these guys do every day in the city, it's tough. You do a ride along with them and you see what they have to interact with. But somehow, I think if we've got some funding, you'd set up something separate and aside that wouldn't drain the resources of the police so that we could go and not have to worry about, you know, who's stealing our mail, or, you know, who's taking the lawn furniture, the lawn ornaments out of our front yard, or the garden hoses, that type of thing, and get to work on that. I would like to see if we could do something and stop these car thefts, because it's just out of hand. So I, again, I'd like to see something on a future agenda. It would make that request for those two agenda items to be added. That's it. Cover my meetings, next council meeting, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pye.
I'll address him first. I'm not going to talk about tiny homes. And with respect to what you want to do, I will give you a webinar that I got from League of California Cities, because it's not that simple. Basically, if a person still less than $95, you catch them, you let them go. So let me give you the information I got from California City. I'm not saying that your request is not wrong, but I think there needs to be some more resource.
That was the request was, is that we research this, have staff research it and get back to us, I might not have been clear, but to look into, see what we can and can't do on that.
On May 20th, I forgot to mention the youth commission, the youth that won awards at First Baptist Church, and they were grade school, Morgan Brown won first place, Ronnie Morehead ran second place, and Amir Ha Guatli won third place. For middle school, Kenya Lopez first place, Julian Lidenza second place, Roxanne Amesola third place, and high school, Lechera Sante Dolan first place. The, at Painted Hills, the, first of all, I want to congratulate the principal, Grainer. He is not just a principal of Painted Hills, he's also a community principal, and he has meetings once a month with primarily Rancho de Oro, but it's anyone that wants to come. And he started this because kids from his school were throwing rocks or doing things in Rancho de Oro that they should not do. And he could have said, I'll take care of it, but he has a monthly meeting with them every day, and all people are welcome to come. Oh, I just talked about the homeless. The Palm Springs, yes, Palm Springs City Council had a meeting regarding the $10 million that they're going to get for the homeless shelters. It's not a lot of money, they, it has to be sustainable, they have to make a decision by February 15th. They were hoping to make it regional, but based on the qualification. They were hoping to make it regional, but based on the qualifications for which they can spend the money, I don't know if they'll be able to make it regional. But we'll find out shortly. They have to put their plan in by the 15th and then they have two years to spend the money. One future is a community group that I and Mayor Pro Tim Griffith belongs to. And it's mainly right now focused on desert schools and desert hot springs. And the purpose of it is to stop absenteeism. And we're coming up with ways through the community and through the school district to try and stop absenteeism. The main issue right now that we last worked on is to try and work on middle schools. The grade schools, they have one teacher and they are communicating with that one teacher. And there's a problem with sixth grade going into middle school now, but that's the way it is. When they go into middle school, they are, they're not, it's not the same group of kids. And they have many more teachers and that's where the absentee starts. So we're working on that for right now. Ms. Eastman talked about the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club. So I don't need to talk about that. But I want to talk about a gentleman while I was trying to go to the meeting today, and his name is Alex. And the reason why I want to talk to him is because chivalry is not dead. I had a flat tire and I went to a place to fill my tire and I was impatient and really didn't know what to do. And this guy came over and helped me. And then he had to go back into the gas station and he came back and helped me again. And it was very cold. So I got the one tire fixed and told him I have no more patience. But I wanted to tell you that chivalry is not dead. I'm done.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Griffith.
I had a very easy agenda after the last meeting, I disappeared. I went to a conference in Monterey for a hotel, it was basically a hoteliers conference. So I didn't attend a lot of meetings, however, I did attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting today. We are, the Chamber of Commerce is very interested in the group that Jan and I are on, which is the DHS Family Alliance. And so the membership coordinator is now one of the members and we had Ann Kalasek from the school district come and talk to the Chamber of Commerce. The goal is to try and get more community leaders interested in this effort. And so it was a very, very productive meeting. The people on the board were very interested in contributing and looking at seeing how they can do things such as getting businesses involved to show support for the children for staying in school. That was pretty much my last two weeks.
Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been pretty quiet here too, as Garrison Keeler would have said on the radio, it was a quiet week in Lake Wobegon. I had one meeting outside of the city, attended the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board meeting. Couple of things to report on that. The CBB has a great YouTube channel, they use videos in marketing the valley. Part of the efforts, part of our efforts to obtain the Sandisso National Monument headquarters is featured in their latest video as hiking out in Mission Creek and highlights the proximity of DHS and our spas to the mountains and to outdoor activities and hiking. That should be up on their YouTube channel in the next week. And we've been working with them as well as they update their tourism maps to showcase the access and hiking to Desert Hot Springs as well. Got to judge a chili cook-off at Vista Montaña with, this past weekend, along with Councilmember Pye, I'm still alive. There was some great tasting chili out there and found out that Ms. Pye and I have vastly different tastes in chili. Met with our new City Economic Development Director Denise Hammett. We had an hour meeting scheduled, turned into a two-hour meeting. I'm really excited about what she's working on, the direction the city's going and attracting new businesses. And I'm confident we'll see some exciting changes in the year coming up. Really pleased about the SNBUS support, it's a great program here. I'm glad that Denise, or that Melissa, I believe it's Melissa, Melanie, thank you. Melanie was able to get in touch with you and work something out. We do have a lot of pet issues, it looks like, today on the agenda. And I wanted to talk briefly about dog parks. I take Luna over to the Palm Springs and Rancho Mirage dog parks several times a week just because we don't have a big dog park here. And almost every time, I run into somebody from DHS out there. It shows we need a big dog park here. And I wanted to bring that up and get it onto our working agenda to see if we can find some space to develop a big dog park here in the near future. And I will agree with my distinguished colleague, Mr. Betts, about spa preservation. And I recognized that the Planning Commission really didn't have much of a choice in their approval of that latest conversion. But I agree, we need to look at a way at stemming the loss and preserving our existing spas. So I'd like to see that brought up as well. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I did have a busy couple of weeks. So I first started with, I was invited to Playoff Sports Bar. This is a really good, a feel-good story. There's a resident of Desert Hot Springs who formed a league. If anybody knows cornhole, it's like a camping game and if you like that game, it's kind of fun. They actually formed a league and they did it for fun and it turned into this giant league. They actually have, I believe it's like multiple, multiple teams. It's down at Bermuda Dunes, there's a large restaurant bar out there and they have tennis courts that aren't used anymore and they're using these as the tournament area. Well, they decided to put together this league and it expanded so much, they wanted to put money towards charity and they raised $7,500 for Food Now. And they presented Food Now with a check this last week. Really heartwarming, as a lot of you know, it's our local food bank here in Desert Hot Springs. It's helping, it's feeding over 500 families a week. $1 can feed five families. So you can imagine what $7,500 can do. So it's really heartwarming to see that. Attended the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Transportation Meeting and Executive Meeting, both in the same day, different times. Not a lot pertaining to Desert Hot Springs, but we do have a member in the Coachella Valley, Lisa Middleton, who's a council member in Palm Springs, who has been appointed to the Zero Traffic Fatalities Task Force by the governor. She is one of two elected officials in the state of California that actually get to travel to Sacramento and talk with other officials about how they're going to slow traffic down in the state of California. There's a formula, it's done and it's quite confusing and they're trying to find other ways to allow local municipalities to be able to lower speed limits in areas that traffic is driving too fast. So she gives an update each meeting and it was kind of interesting. Nothing pertaining yet, no legislation yet, but I'll keep you posted on that. Riverside County Transportation Commission, which I represent the city on, has a yearly workshop. Almost every year that I've been on it, it's been in Palm Springs. This year again, it was in Palm Springs at the Hilton. And we meet in the afternoon on a Thursday, starting around noon. We end with a dinner and then come back the following morning for a half a day. And then everybody disperses. All cities in Riverside County, plus all five county supervisors have a seat on this board. Some of the real interesting discussion, and I wanted to pull a couple of things up here and talk about them. The first day was not a lot of new information, there was one interesting panel. It was actually the project managers from Riverside County Transportation talking about the projects. The one that affects us the most is the 60, when you travel from here to Moreno Valley. Again, the truck climbing lanes, stay away from there if you can. It's down to one lane on one side and soon will be, the eastbound lanes will be down to one side. The traffic does back up during peak hours. So there's 2 million cubic square feet of dirt that has to be moved and it's going to, another 18 months worth of that project to go. Lot of other projects, you really don't realize the millions and billions of dollars that have been spent in transportation over the last few years and I'll get into that in a minute. But one of the interesting things was, we had a legislative update, which was the normal updates from the state and feds. But the next day, we had a discussion about SB 743. It was a Senate bill passed in 2013. And how vehicles, so how projects qualify, large projects, is there used to be a formula called Level of Service. And that would measure the traffic flows on roadways and they would be given a grade A through F. A being the best and F being, you know, bad, just like school. And this Senate bill actually in 2013 said, you need to find a different way. Well, a lot of organizations have not found a different way to do it yet. And so they've come up with this Vehicles Miles Travel. And what they're trying to do is take vehicles off the street or reduce their travel times by having a carpool, other things like that. San Francisco is actually working on a pilot program through insurance where they actually put a tracker in your vehicle to see how many miles you're tracking and you get insurance discounts, incentives from them for that. But it helps calculate how these roadways are being overused. I go back to, we spent billions of dollars since I've been on that Transportation Commission in the 90, 91, 215 area through Corona. And we're still, I mean, as soon as they opened up those lanes and made the freeways bigger, they're just not growing fast enough. Literally 10 years ago when I started on the commission, they wanted to double deck the Corona freeway area because that was the only way they were going to relieve traffic, at that time they thought. But that was a, you know, four or $5 billion project, never going to happen. So there's been a big discussion on a 30-year plan on how to relieve traffic in the Western Riverside area. And so they're going to this Vehicle Miles Traveled. But this led, it was a really good presentation by Beth Best and Krieger, one of the attorneys that represent Riverside County Transportation. And she gave this presentation, what we have to do in amending CEQA and all this other stuff in these road projects in the future. So it was kind of interesting to hear. But you start, your mind starts going, is how are they going to relieve this traffic? We're fortunate in the Coachella Valley because this county was split years ago, where 25% of every dollar, or 25% of the transportation dollars come to Coachella Valley Association of Governments. And we get to spend that money out here, the nine cities in Blythe get to figure out how that money's spent. And they decided years ago to put together what they call a TPPS, which is a transportation prioritization, whatever it stands for. And it basically rates the roads and that's how we build roads and freeways here in the desert. But there's still this huge problem in the Southwest District and the Corona area and the Lake Elsinore area. It's becoming a real bad issue during the Beaumont area. And sorry for this long dissertation on what traffic's about, but it led to this discussion that we started years ago on what is the future? So Riverside County Transportation hired a company called WSP and they were formed in Australia. And the Melbourne area, if you're familiar with Australia at all, is a metropolitan area and they had the same issues with traffic, like Los Angeles does and other metropolitan areas. You would basically, from about 5:30 in the morning to 9:00 AM, it was gridlocked traffic. And it would take you two hours to get to work. They came up with a system where over the freeways, there was lights that would show you the lanes that were traveling. They would be different colors so you could move into those lanes as they were moving faster. They also metered the off-ramps in a way that would meter the correct times to make sure that a certain amount of vehicles were on the freeway at a time. So they found out if they could take 20, the 23,000 to 26,000 vehicles were the norm, which was gridlocked and everything. If they could bring that down to 21,000 vehicles on the freeway at a time, the traffic would flow. And they proved it. They put the system in effect. Within two months, people that would have to travel two hours were traveling 30 minutes to work. And the traffic went from, it was a grid that showed black all the way down to almost yellow, meaning the traffic was flowing. Very interesting. Riverside County Transportation's hired them to do a pilot down in the Southwest District in Temacula, if you've ever traveled through Temacula, it's becoming gridlocked now. And so now they're going to do this pilot program down there and give a study on what would need to be done to relieve that traffic. Because honestly, there's nowhere else to build unless you go up. There's no way you can widen the freeways in most areas. They've used, they've bought all the right of way up, they've widened them as far as they've gone. So it was a very interesting discussion. Not a lot of times do you get a lot out of this, but we have to be mindful of where our tax dollars are going in the future. And as you pay SB 1 funds whenever you fill up your gas tank, that money goes to these freeways. And Riverside County Transportation, as I announced at the last meeting, will be proposing a half-cent tax or a cent tax, half-cent tax measure on the ballot this year to go to transportation to help fund some of these projects. You want to know what your money's going to. So I thought it was very interesting. Pat Yorbra was a senior who came to the podium and she was very upset last meeting. Myself and Doria Williams met with her last week, last week, right? Last week. And at first I thought she was advocating for seniors, but come to find out, she was advocating for seniors in herself. And so we found her and her friend that came to our office to have very financial difficulties. And we were given a lesson on what seniors are earning social security-wise, what they're getting medical-wise and what they're getting in food stamps to survive, especially if you lost your spouse or your partner. So I reached out to the county supervisor's office. At the same time, Doria took the information to Roberta and they started to put together a senior fair that will bring all services to one location. And we're going to send flyers out to all the senior neighborhoods. We're going to utilize the senior center to get transportation through a bus and be able to have everybody, and try to put on this fair once. We'll probably do it once this year, but we'll try to do it a couple of times a year, each year. We didn't realize how many services there are, but how difficult it is for seniors to get these services because they have to travel to find them. So you have the Department of Services, Office of Aging, you have to travel to these nonprofits. So we've got a date, tentative date, we're working on, did you want to announce it maybe? I didn't know if I wanted to go that far.
So right now, we're looking at March 24th, from 8:00 AM to noon at the Desert Hot Springs Health and Wellness Center on Choya Drive.
And there'll be more flyers coming out, we're going to have transportation, that's going to be available for seniors. And this will give an opportunity, she was in my office and she did not know that she could walk across the street basically to Food Now and get food once a week. She was telling us in tears and how much she has to, how much food she doesn't have, how she can't eat sometimes. So it was very heartwarming, but we thought that would be very important. Which leads me into the Mizell Senior Center Gala. They have it once a year, they raise money for Meals on Wheels. And I don't remember the number, but it was tens of thousands of meals each year that's given out from Desert Hot Springs to Palm Springs, all the way to the Salt and Sea, I believe, in the Meals on Wheels program. Most of the council was able to attend. The fundraiser was very successful, I believe they raised hundreds of thousands of dollars at night. Or at least $100,000 at night, there was a lot of money thrown around. And that's another service we'll be talking with when it comes to these seniors. And lastly, I was asked to speak at the Desert Hot, it's the Palm Springs Realtors Group and they do a Desert Hot Springs caravan. And I invited Denise, our Economic Development Manager, to come this morning with me and give a little update of what's going on in the city. The Realtors are important to us, a lot of them do live in our community because they sell homes and they help homeownership. And that's some of our biggest challenges in Desert Hot Springs is getting rid of, getting someone out of a renting or leasing situation into homeownership because you have more pride in your home. And so we were able to speak to them, give them update to the city and we think they were well-educated on that. So that was my two weeks. A little busier than your guys' right? Now move on to city business. Our first item on the agenda is going to be, we don't have any public hearings tonight, but we'll go to administrative calendar, our item. Number four is the consideration of whether to pursue a dog breeding ordinance. And I'm going to let the city attorney talk a little bit about what she came up with. I know we have some speakers in the audience, we'll go to public comments after that. And I just wanted to say, look, whether you support this or you don't support it, the reason it was brought to the council for discussion is because we have a concern resident of our community that had some concerns about not being able to breed his animals in a proper licensed way. And I thought it was very important to be able to come to the city council and be able to vet this out and talk about this. We had a huge issue here in Desert Hot Springs years ago with puppy mills. And we stopped that and it's gotten a lot better. But now is the question, should we be able to have proper breeding done under proper licensing and proper supervision? So with that said, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much. The item you have before you this evening is just frankly, various ordinances that we grabbed from various cities with respect to dog breeding. Currently, the city does not allow backyard dog breeding. It was recommended by the council for us to at least look into some dog breeding, specifically with respect to dog breeding under the American Kennel Club. uh, specifically with respect to, um, dog breeding under the American Kennel Club, um, regulations. They are very strict, um, in terms of how they breed dogs. Uh, they are obviously purebred dogs, et cetera. So I came up with kind of a draft, um, actually before I actually get into a little bit of this, of the draft ordinance. Um, I had also a chance to, um, work with Rebecca Deming, uh, planning and in addition, um, with the chief for, you know, uh, and animal control with respect to, uh, the ordinance, uh, the draft ordinance. Um, we would recommend, at least planning would recommend that if, if the city council does, um, move forward with something like this, to have dog breeding in the residential estates area, rural residential and residential low density so that, uh, there's obviously enough room for, uh, dog breeding and, uh, just to be mindful of neighbors and that kind of thing. So, um, then just more space in general. Basically the, what we found is many cities, uh, do allow these kinds of, uh, dog, use purebred, uh, dog breeding, uh, with respect to limitations. First, um, it is, uh, in many cities, it's an exception to their mandatory spay and neuter requirement. So that's how a lot of cities do this. Uh, we actually had it, uh, dog breeding in our land use and planning section. Um, it's actually entitled 17 of our municipal code where the permits actually fall under home occupancy or home occupation permit. So that's kind of where it is in our code. Where we currently, as I said, prohibit, uh, these kinds of, uh, you know, backyard dog breeding. Uh, but with respect to the draft ordinance, uh, we thought it best, you know, that a permit actually be required, uh, by the city. Um, you know, it has to be on, uh, you know, there's certain fees that are paid for, uh, by the applicant with respect to the permits. Um, that there are very strict criteria. I'm not going to go through all of them, you could, they're on page 10 and 11 of your packet, but there's very strict criteria with respect to health and safety standards, not only of, uh, the dogs themselves, but in addition, we want to make sure that, you know, neighbors and things like that have, would have, uh, you know, recourse if things got out of hand. But basically to breed once a year only, um, and just to have certain regulations with respect to, um, you know, the sale of any, uh, you know, puppies, things like that. Uh, in addition, we would, we, uh, when we were researching this, um, we came across, hang on, let me get this straight. We came across, um, something called Breed With Heart, which was new to me. Um, and it's actually kind of adopted through the American Kennel Club and it is, uh, regulations on proper, uh, dog breeding, um, conscientious, uh, animal breeding in general. And so we thought it would be best as well that the owner or the custodian of the dog, um, you know, to be bred, needs to have, uh, completed the Breed With Heart, um, or the equivalent, you know, something equivalent, um, that they have completed some kind of program that either the American Kennel Club offers, um, or another equivalent, uh, association. So we did go through, um, a few, several cities ordinances, what they did and, uh, came up with what we thought, what we thought some would be something, uh, palatable and very, um, conscientious in terms of breeding of animals. That is what we did.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start with public comments. Uh, Will, I'm looking at you, you're going to go first. And then, uh, just state your name and then your time will begin. There will be a three-minute timer up here, um, and then the next person would want to speak again. Once you state your name or three minutes, we'll begin.
All right. Good evening. My name is Will Comparcy. My husband and I actually just moved to the city. Uh, we just bought a home here just a few months ago. And coming into the city, I went down to City Hall and I'm a dog breeder, I'm a reputable dog breeder, I'm a show dog breeder. I went down to the city to get the proper permits, to get the, what I needed to do to be a beneficial member of, uh, the community and to do things the right way. And, you know, God bless them, the girls in City Hall, they were so sweet to me, but found out we just didn't have anything. There was nothing for us that are, those of us that are really trying to do, do our best for the dogs. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Palm Springs Dog Training Club, the Southern California Professional Groomers Association, and the preservation dog breeders in the city. I've been an active purebred dog show enthusiast since 1998. I've dedicated myself to man's best friend, adhering to the strictest ethical guidelines set forth by my parent club. I've spent countless hours of continual education on everything from breed type, genetic disorders and proper care and husbandry. I'm in complete support of creating this pathway for responsible dog breeders. The fact of the matter is, all dog breeders aren't bad. Some of us spend a lifetime dedicating ourselves to our individual breeds. And we adhere to all required health testings required for our breeds. We stand behind our puppies and their families that they go to. We offer a lifetime of support, educating people on responsible pet ownership. The proposed ordinance today, with its stringent requirements for health testings, falls directly in line with all accepted ethical breeding practices of any breed club. I know for me, my breeding program has been independently scrutinized by GoodDog.com, a company that vets dog breeders, its practices, its health clearances. I'm happy to say that I'm listed as a responsible dog breeder with an excellent rating for my health clearances, the highest rating that they give. So for this ordinance to require breeders to prove that they are compliant with health screenings, is absolutely right on track. It's what any responsible dog breeder does. I did have one suggestion. I would like to recommend that we add that puppies need to also be microchipped. Um, I know for myself, every puppy that I produce is seen by a veterinarian a minimum of two times before they're placed. You know, for age-appropriate vaccinations and also for microchipping. And I think that would be a good way to help keep track of things in for puppies. I want you to remember, people should have the right to choose. We should have the right to choose where we get our next family pet. Currently, Americans go in search of eight million dogs annually. Without access to reputable dog breeders, people are forced to choose dogs without health clearances, without proper knowledge of breed, breed genetic disorders, and without the support of a responsible dog breeder. When you force people to choose dogs that don't necessarily fit their lifestyle, you are not setting the dog or the family up for success. Because of my dedication to the strictest of health screenings and proper breed type and structure, many of my puppies have actually gone on to be service dogs. I've spoken to Guide Dogs of the Desert and they've expressed their need to work with outside breeders here in the valley. They've gone over my breeding practices and my health screenings and they are in compliance with even their high standards. I'm hoping that you guys will give me the opportunity to work with them. This ordinance is designed to create a pathway for responsible dog breeders. Uh, I ask you to follow suit with the many other cities across this valley and across this state that have made the stand for reputable dog breeders. I hope you will find a way to accept reputable dog breeders in this community. We're not the problem, we're actually part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. I let him go over a little bit to make sure you got all those points out also. If you need, have any questions for him during your comments, please feel free to reach out to him. I'll, I'm going to answer those questions. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Final call? All right, we'll open up city council, Ms. Pye.
I make a recommendation for, um, discussion that we consider whether to direct staff to move forward with the process of preparing a dog breeding ordinance.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion.
Wait for it on the screen. Is there a second? Second it and we'll go back to discussion, Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, a, 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 a very, uh, difficult decision we have in front of us, but, uh, I did want to say, uh, that, uh, the city attorney and the chief, um, come up with a well-written, uh, well-drafted, very tight ordinance that I think accomplishes the goals that, uh, that the proponents have advocated for. But that being said, I'm afraid I'm going to have to be opposed to it and let me explain why. While there are some reputable breeders and I have no doubt that the people before us today would fit that category. What this does, I think, I'm afraid, is that it opens the door for some backyard puppy mills and previous councils have banned breeding in the city. And we've seen a noticeable decrease in loose dogs and disposable puppies in the several years that we've had our animal control, uh, staff, on staff, in the city staff and since we've adopted that ordinance. And I see this as a possible unfortunate loophole and backdoor to allowing that, much to the detriment of the reputable breeders that are out there because our ACC staff is stretched very thin. And they don't, I think, have the resources or the time to enforce this and do what it's going to take to make sure that both the reputable breeders are doing what they need to do and the backyard puppy mills are not skirting the law and going around it. I don't see us having the time and staff to do that. They're stretched pretty thin and they're doing such a great job now of the things that we need them to do that this would be a distraction. I see we have too many disposable dogs and cats in our shelter now. I've rescued dogs myself. My current dog, Luna, is a rescue. She was bred by a purebred husky breeder in Southern California that was not up to the standards that our proponents have brought forward. They let her go to a family that lived in a studio apartment with a one-year-old baby and who left her in a cage for a year and a half when we got her. She had toenails an inch and a half long, she'd never been groomed, she'd never been chipped, she'd never been shot with her vaccination, she'd never been licensed. It's taken us a year and a half to get her to be social and to be a wonderful, loving dog. And there's hundreds and hundreds of those out there. I don't want to see any more disposable dogs. Those folks, I don't see this as taking away a choice either. The people that actually want to buy a purebred dog, that insist on doing that, that don't want to go to the shelter and get a rescue dog, still have a hundred, hundreds, hundreds of options throughout Southern California to pick one up. I don't want Desert Hot Springs to be part of the problem with that. So I would not be in favor of moving this forward. Thank you.
Ms. Bets?
I want to, uh, this first came to us, I thought, all right, well, somebody's going to go, maybe take over the animal hospital that's sitting empty right now and set their business up there. And then I get the packet and I, you know, it's presented to us after we agreed to put this on the agenda and I start looking through here and it's in section 17 of the municipal code prohibited home occupation uses. And there's a big, long list of things that are, you're not allowed to do in the neighborhood, like barber and beauty shop. Can't go set up a barber, a beauty shop in your home in your residential neighborhood. Can't set up a carpentry or a cabot making business, that seems understandable. You know, somebody every morning waking up, you got, you know, saws and noise going on. You can't set up a medical or a dental office or a clinic or a laboratory. Can't set up a mini storage repair, fix-it or plumbing shops. Uh, just vehicle repair, welding. It's a big, long list of things that are prohibited uses in a residentially zoned neighborhood. And the reason for that is noise, commotion and disrupting the neighborhood. Now, there's one calls that I think we get as council members more often than any is somebody calling us because they've got a neighbor who's causing them a problem, somebody who's set up a, um, auto repair or whatever else and they don't want to intervene themselves. They just want us to help them try and relieve that pressure, that disturbance in the neighborhood. But one of the other things that's listed here is that businesses which entail the harboring, training, breeding, raising or grooming of dogs, cats and animals. So it falls into that same category. So now I've heard from lots of people who make some of the same arguments that you present about, you know, we've got a lot of dogs and cats out there that are just, uh, being put down because nobody wants them and I, I, you know. So I'm sympathetic to those arguments, but for me, I'm just looking at what's a properly designated use and as this ordinance is written, it says, well, we're going to take our home occupation uses and scratch that out and create a whole bunch of regulations for allowing a business in a residential neighborhood. And on that basis, I just can't go with this at all. Um, I can just imagine if my neighbor starts setting up a dog breeding business next door to them. It's just, it's a commotion. I'm in my backyard, I've got, I'm imagining puppies barking, noise, whatever. I don't think you can train puppies not to bark at an early age and, you know, you have a lab, a litter of Labrador Retrievers and it's what, eight, 10, 12 dogs in a litter? Um, it's just, uh, so anyhow, on that basis alone, now if somebody is talking about setting this up in a, um, a business, a commercially zoned district, which it is a business where that should go, well, then I got to get into all these other arguments about, you know, because I, I certainly appreciate the, the, you know, I've seen the shows on TV with the, the dogs that go to the shows and, you know, it's a very wonderful art thing. Uh, it's, it's a craft, a trade to get these dog shows, just wonderful. I mean, we watch, we've all watched them on TV before and those dogs just don't come out of nowhere. Um, but, um, I just don't want them coming out of a residential neighborhood. So just on that basis alone, I'm just completely opposed to this and I hope the council will show some common sense. And, uh, say that this is the wrong place to be putting dog breeding, no matter how you feel about it, on one way or the other.
Mr. Griffith?
Uh, so as I understand it, what we're doing tonight is considering whether to pursue one, which would then come back to us to take a look at and vote on, is that correct? So we're not voting necessarily yes or no on an ordinance, we are just considering to pursue one?
That, that's correct. If the city councils, uh, council decides to move forward, it would have to go through Planning Commission. It's a zoning issue, so it would have to go through Planning Commission. And it would be an ordinance to go through Planning Commission, um, and then through the city council, like any other ordinance.
Okay, and if, uh, I might get this wrong, low-density residential is up to six units per acre?
I would defer to, is that correct Rebecca? I would defer to, uh, the director.
I believe so.
Okay, so, um.
I'd have to double check though.
I also have some concerns. I, I appreciate what you want to do. Um, I, it's nice to have someone that actually cares about animals. Anyone who lives here knows there's tons of loose animals, there's tons of loose dogs. Uh, we have quite a number of organizations that are doing rescues from the shelters. I have some concerns, here's a couple of them. Um, as far as availability for choice, uh, I went on the AKC website today, there is 249 AKC breeders within 50 miles of us. So there is a wide range of options out there. I'm going to be real upfront with you, I'm not a fan of breeding. Um, I think there's too many dogs that are being put down and, uh, people get kind of hooked into these trends of this is the most French Bulldogs, okay, everybody wants a French Bulldog. And so, uh, there's other dogs that might, might be available. How many are we losing because they want, want that? Uh, I'm not going to let that influence me, I'm just saying, overall, I'm not a fan. One of the things that I think I struggle with is that in our animal control reports last week was a report about, uh, someone complained about dogs digging under the fence, getting in their yard and they went there and the woman had eight, had a, a dog that had eight puppies. And she refused to get her dog spayed. That is not a legal breeder, but it's happening out there. And so what do we have? We have these people that are also out there doing this without any kind of, uh, legislation or regulations. I think if we were going to do this, I would want to find some way to put some teeth into it so we can actually address that issue because, um, if we're denying someone like you who is a responsible reader the right to breed, but we have other people out there that can just go ahead and have litters and then don't care. That's a problem for me. So I don't know if we can do mandatory spay and neuter unless it is a breeder. Um, I don't know if that's a possibility. That's something if we were going to move forward, I would want to pursue and find out.
I'd have to research it, but several cities actually do that. I'm not condoning or not condoning it because I haven't actually looked to see if that, if there's, legally that that would be okay, but it is the practice of several cities where they do have a mandatory spay and neuter program, except for these kinds of dogs.
That are licensed breeders, right?
Correct. Licensed breeders that are breeding, that are breeding either purebreds or something, you know, or some kind of, licensed breeders.
Okay. I had some questions when I read the ordinance that I'm not going to ask tonight because I think, I think it needs to be a little more well-thought-out, as is, I would have to say, across the board, no. All right. So I'm willing to bring this forward, but I would like some more specifics, and I think a little more time to do some research and to see what the city can come up with. I'm not saying that if it comes forward, I will vote for it, but I'm certainly willing to consider it.
So my comments of this is, I believe if we check our ordinances, when we did the puppy mill ordinances to stop that, if you license your animal in the state of Desert Hot Springs, you have to spay and neuter it if it's not a licensed.
What we did do is offer a, an unaltered animal has a much higher license fee. It's over $100.
That's what it is. So the license fee is higher if you don't alter it. If you alter it, you could pay a lower licensing fee. So we do have some of those in place, but maybe we need to tighten those up. Look, certain things are said, and they get under your skin, so when people use the word "common sense," this is common sense to me, is to allow, to have ordinances for licensed breeders so you don't have the incident which Mr. Griffith walked into or read about the other day, so that the responsible people that are doing things do it the right way and are, the black market for breeding out here, I can only imagine what you can see in this town if you could, if you had infrared on just animals and what's going on out there. People are doing it illegally. Isn't that the reason we brought cannabis in and legalized it in the state of Desert Hot Springs so the black market would eventually go away in the state of California? I mean, there should be options. To say no is not responsible city government in my eyes. To make the argument that there's less animals on the street, yeah, it's a good argument. Maybe there is, but we also brought animal control in-house, and we've done a way better job than the county did. Do you think this would be a burden, I'm going to ask the police chief this because he oversees or has overseen animal control in the past, do you foresee this to be a burden on our staff if reputable licensed individuals came in to get their license and if you had to do an audit on them or check out their stuff? Do you foresee it being a burden on our staff?
No, because you're still going to have the breeding going on that's illegal. Here, it's just giving you more control to see the actual breeders, but the illegal breeding will still go out, so we'll still have that issue. It's just my opinion.
I appreciate that. Also, we don't want businesses in Desert Hot Springs breeding animals. That's the reason we got rid of the puppy, we got the puppy mill ordinance. We want licensed, state-licensed and city-licensed individuals to do it, and I understand some of the concerns. You don't want them, but if you talk to Will, he's only breeding his animals a couple times, and that's over one time, and that's over, what, the lifetime of that animal. So, and you're not bringing in multiple animals every week to do this. So there is, there is quite a bit that could be structured in that ordinance to make sure that it's under that, but I think the bigger issue we're going to always have is the black market illegal breeding. So, I mean, I think it's a little unfair for us not to take an option to give some sort of pathway to legalizing the responsible people, but that's an opinion that has to be made by the majority. So as Mr. Griffith said today, this ordinance is not the ordinance. This is to pursue the ordinance. It's been a draft ordinance that's been developed, would go to the planning commission, then back to the city council for final decision. I got two more people back in the queue. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, you know, we've obviously got considerable staff time invested in bringing this forward, and when I voted, you know, last meeting to say, okay, go ahead, do that research, and we got it back, and we got an answer, but now there's going to be considerably more staff time, and I think what council members up here need to decide is if ultimately it's going to come back and you're going to decide, hey, you know what, my feelings are no, then let's not spend that staff time again. You know, they've got other things they can do. You know, I'm pretty sure my decision, especially if it's in residential, is going to be no. And so if, you know, if the sentiments up here, the majority are going to be, well, fine, we did all this work, but it's going to be no anyhow. Let's just make that decision now and say, no, we're not going to direct staff to go do more research on this one. But, so if, absent that, you know, I'm tempted to put an amended amendment to this motion to take out any consideration of dog breeding in residential neighborhoods. If it was going to be allowed, if people's sentiments are that the dog breeding is okay, do it in a commercially-zoned area as a business, that it is, not in a residential zone, or possibly scrap all these other things that are incompatible with residential and let them operate as well. So I think the best course would be to vote no on this motion, if that's the sentiment of the council, that ultimately, when it comes back, that we're going to vote no.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Betts makes a good point, too, on the residential stuff. If, if this were to come back, I would agree with what Mr. Betts said on the residential area, but maybe we're leaving it in for rural residential areas where you have much greater space between neighborhoods might be an option, but that's only if we decide to bring it back. I did have a follow-up question for Chief Henson, if I may. Chief, my point was that our animal control staff would be stretched a little thin because they would be spending time and resources verifying the application, verifying all of the standards were met by each individual breeder that came in and requested a license. Doing that would take additional staff time. Do you have any idea how much staff time that would possibly take?
No, not without knowing how many breeders we would have out there. It's just, my opinion is that we're still going to have the illegal breeding that we're going to have to deal with, but right now, we may only have one breeder. Obviously, if it went into double digits, yeah, that would take more staff time, but right now, I don't see it as taking a significant.
What about, for instance, say, we do approve this, and we do have licensed breeders out there, and somebody goes and gets a license. We say that they're allowed one litter per year, but they go ahead and have two or three. That's going to take additional staff time to make sure that they're only having one or two litters a year.
Yes.
And that was the point I was getting at, is if we have this, and we're taking our precious staff resources, who are doing an outstanding job now in keeping our animals under control and making sure that they're licensed, and I have to, I do have to commend you, Chief, and the animal control staff for the fantastic job that they are doing and the approach that they're taking. They're not going out with a heavy hammer, much as some of us would perhaps like them to do, and clubbing people and saying, get your dog licensed. They're giving them 60-day correctable notices. They're pointing them to the snip bus. They're doing everything they can, and I see that our license numbers are going up because of that, and that, I think, is the right approach to take, and I want them to continue doing that kind of work rather than overseeing breeders and going after irreputable breeders who are skirting the law, that this would possibly open up. That was the point that I wanted to make with that. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
I just have to say, I don't, I don't think commercial would be a good option. When I think of commercial, it kind of reminds me of a puppy mill. I'm looking at, for responsible breeding, what you want is well-trained, socialized dogs. I think if you have it in a commercial area, you're going to have, animals might be left alone at night. So for me, that's not an option. I'm not a fan of the low residential. I live in low residential. I'm surrounded by eight dogs. I get a lot of noise, but that doesn't necessarily mean that would apply certainly to you. I certainly have some neighbors that need some education themselves. But I did consider, am I wasting staff's time on this? And I think if I can address some of my concerns with them, then it might be possible we could bring something forward that I would be really happy with.
All right, I got nobody else in the queue. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, Ms. By.
I just need to say where I'm coming from. I'm very afraid of all animals. I am, but I had to think about this before making a decision. Ms. Stonebreaker emailed me last night and asked me to consider this. What I did, I understand that for some and many, that they believe these dogs are like their children. And so when I approached it that way, then I was understanding the dogs. I have to figure out how I'm going to say it because I say I'm afraid. I am. I had to consider the dogs and what is happening to them. And when I considered it that way, this motion I can consider to go forward, but I just needed to tell you I'm afraid.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, just quickly on the, you know, if you're looking at animal population issue, what happens when you've got the breeding going on is maybe one litter will be six to eight puppies, and then those go out to somebody, and if those, obviously, there's not much value to a purebred dog if you spay or neuter it because the person who's getting it not only wants to show up, but there's probably, they want to go breed it themselves. And so now you've got a litter going out breeding, and I guess we all know how population grows. There's puppies, you know, having puppies, having puppies, and going on and on and on, and that's how this, it just keeps going on. And you're just encouraging something that's been a huge problem, and I'm listening to Bob Barker playing in my head, you know, spay and neuter your animals, please. Let's solve this problem. And I don't see it every day like our animal control does, but I'm sure it's just heart-wrenching when they have to take a dog, a perfectly good dog, and put it down. There's so many dogs out there that need to be adopted, and so I just can't see this one going anywhere as far as I'm concerned. If you want to have staff, bring it back. So I've got that concern. I certainly share the sentiments of Councilmember Gardner regarding staff time. I think it's fanciful to think that there isn't going to be staff time involved. I know it's involved when you've got a barking dog complaint or any other complaint. First off, they've got to track it down. They've got to be there at the time. It's, and, you know, you're giving license now to people who may be irresponsible breeders through this ordinance to say, okay, great, I'm just going to get on there and sign up and be a breeder now. Now you've got to go enforce them and police that issue. So anyhow, if it's not obvious by now, I'm just completely and totally opposed to this idea.
Okay. Again, we're just putting stuff out there. It isn't even close to truth. If you read what was there and you listened to the speaker, you have to be licensed. You have to be part of these groups. You have to be AK, whatever it is, certified. I mean, there's so many other things you have to be. It's not someone running down there just to breed animals. So, I mean, putting stuff out there like that is ridiculous. All right. I have nobody else in the queue right now. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts and Councilmember Gardner opposed.
All right, so the item will then be forwarded to development of an ordinance that will end up in front of the planning commission and go from there.
So do we have time with staff on this one?
You always have time, Mr. Betts. You don't need to ask that question. You know, you could always talk to staff about any items, and they'll sit down with you and spend an hour weekly, like to do with every council member, and this could be on your agenda. Absolutely.
Good. All right, we'll bring that up.
Item number five is professional services agreement with DTA to prepare a development impact fee study upon update for the city. Mr. Buckheim?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience that was here, you're more than welcome to leave. You don't have to sit here and listen to the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, so the city imposes development impact fees for the purpose of providing funding for future products, projects that will be, that will be needed due to the new developments, such as, you know, parks, street improvements, and city facilities. The city's development impact fee study was, and master facility plan was last updated in October 2008. So in November 2019, the city issued a request for proposal to update the development and impact fee study, and we received three proposals from DTA, Matrix, and Will Dan. After city staff reviewed the proposals, it was determined that the firm, DTA, provided the most comprehensive proposal to update the city's DIF study, and staff also received positive references from DTA's past clients, including several here in the Coachella Valley. It's expected that the update will take five to six months, and after the final review, staff does the final review of the report, it will, we will bring it to the updated study to the city council. DTA is proposing, proposed fee of $48,680. The 1920 budget has $50,000 appropriated for this study. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with DTA to provide a development impact fee study update and nexus study in amount, in an amount not to exceed $48,680 and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary agreements as approved or formed by the city attorney.
All right, we'll move on to public comments at this point. Would anybody like to speak on this item? No one coming forth. What are councilmember comments? Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I'm looking here for DTA. What does that stand for?
Actually, it's, they've actually changed their name. It was, the firm was previously called Daniel Tosick and Associates.
Okay, how long, how long have they been around?
They've actually been around quite a while, and they came, highly recommended.
Okay, and Matrix Consulting, they've been around a while?
Yes, they have.
Okay, so they're the low bidder by, what, $7,000? Is there a reason why we're not saving $7,000 and going with Matrix?
Because their proposal was not as comprehensive. DTA did a much better explanation of what they were going to do, how they were going to work with staff, and what was needed. DTA also had better references from past clients. I checked the clients with Matrix as well, and they, while the clients were satisfied, they did have some issues with Matrix.
Okay, and Will Dan's up at $72,000, so they're out of the question altogether. Do you anticipate the, they're going to come back with a recommendation for lowering our DIF fees or raising them?
I do not know. There could be some fees that might be raised, some fees that might be lowered. We also have to take into consideration that the 2008 DIF update took place before the annexation of about, what, 4,000 square miles in 2010. So it could be, they can come back with completely different rates, even lowered.
Okay, and this is?
I have, I don't know.
And this is taking into consideration the annexed area, correct?
Yes.
Which is critical.
Yes, until it also means improved or changes to the master facilities plans because then obviously need, I might be needing other additional city facilities, like additional parks, fire station, items like that.
Okay, I appreciate those explanations. Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, I'll make a motion.
I got one more in the queue. Hold your motion, and I'll get to you. As soon as she's done, you can make the motion. Ms. By?
I'd like to know, and help me with these Desert Valley Build, if they, they cannot dictate to us, but sometimes we have had issues, and then after the thing is done, you know where I'm going.
I do. So Desert Valley Builders Association and the BIA, both organizations, Jeffrey, our finance director, has already been in communication with them, and we're being very proactive with them. While they cannot dictate to us what can and cannot be done, so on and so forth, we certainly have a good partnership with them, and we'll continue collaborating with them throughout this process so that at the end, we're not, you know, pulling teeth. It's truly an effort where everybody feels like they've been included and have been consulted every step of the way. Absolutely.
Nobody else in the queue. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, motion to approve or authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with DTA to provide a development impact fee study update and nexus study, including the annexed area, in an amount not to exceed $48,680.
There's a motion by Mr. Betts, a second by Mr. Griffith. I have nobody else in the queue. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next item, item number six, the city council appointments to the planning commission. Our city clerk, Jaros Riana, will give the report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as of last month, the two-year term, which began in January 2018, for all five members of the planning commission has expired. With that being said, the municipal code provides for the process expired. With that being said, the municipal code provides for the process of appointments by the city council. And so that is, one member of each commission shall be appointed by one member of the city council and ratified by a majority of the city council. Members of any commission shall be appointed for a two-year term. That starts in the February meeting of the year of appointment. At the completion of any term, a commissioner may be reappointed pursuant to the procedure set forth in the municipal code. And then any vacancies that occur shall be filled by appointment for the unexpired term of the member replaced. So for this term, it would be until February, or excuse me, January 2022. In the staff report, I've indicated the individuals who have applied for the Planning Commission, whether it be their first choice, second choice, or third choice, as well as reappointment requests from the incumbent commissioners. That concludes my staff report. Turn it over back to the council.
So to streamline this, what I'd like to do is just go down the line, and you can name your nominee, and I'll just ask for any objections on that. If there's no objections, I'll go to the next council member and so forth until we finish all our nominations and then make one vote. Is that fair enough? So we'll start with Mr. Betts.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and nominate Dawn Griffiths as my appointment. Let her continue as the incumbent position.
Ms. Griffith?
I will like to reappoint Augustine Aragon. He's only been on a few months. I think it takes some time to get the wheels turning. So that's my nomination.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, I would like to reappoint Larry Buchanan, the chair, current chair of the Planning Commission, to another term. Thank you.
Ms. Pye?
Richard Delfold, he has not completed his two years.
And I'll be reappointing Jim Nadell. Is there any objections to those nominations?
I have a question.
Yes.
Did Councilmember Betts, did she respond?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she, I don't know if she knew that she was supposed to let Gerald know. I think I mentioned to Gerald. I know it says here, no response, but I did talk to her. Yeah, she's very interested. So that might have been my miscue on that one.
Anybody in the public like to make any comments to this? All right. Was there a motion?
Motion to approve the nominees as recommended, or made, whatever you call it.
Push the button there. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number seven is the city council appointments to the Public Safety Commission. Mr. Sariano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My staff report on this item is similar to the previous item, except this is for the Public Safety Commission.
All right. We'll do it the same manner if everybody's okay with that. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I'm going to go with the person who's presently holding the position, Ted Meyerhoffen.
Ms. Griffith?
I will go with Florence Martin. She's not had two years yet.
Mr. Gardner?
I would like to reappoint Walt Meyer to the Public Safety Commission.
Ms. Pye?
Lee Rory Eastman.
And I'll be reappointing Donna Lozano. Any objections to those nominations?
Motion to approve. A great slate. Oh, yeah, I gotta push the button. Thanks.
There is a motion and a second. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this item? No one coming forth. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number three is the city council appointments to the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission. Had a lot of discussion recently by members of the commission that have left the commission, members of the commission that are currently appointed to the commission. The city manager's office had a suggestion and would like to go over some options.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So as you mentioned, there's been a lot of discussion as of late with respect to the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission and how best to move forward with this commission. So tonight, we're coming to you asking for direction on whether or not we want to proceed with seating a new commission, or if we want to potentially explore some other options for how we can still be inclusive of the community while moving events forward under the umbrella of the actual city at this point. So I'll go over some kind of brief overviews of some of the experience that we've had over the last couple of years, and then some options, and then you guys can discuss it from there. So this is obviously a mandated commission. It does fall under the Brown Act with monthly meetings. Over the last several years, it's been a very rare occurrence to see a one member complete a full term. And so this commission is responsible for overseeing and putting on events, you know, putting on projects as it relates to art in the community. And so when you have those types of occasions going on, having consistency for the, just the event planning portion is obviously key, as well as, you know, making sure there's consistency for relationships with outside vendors, getting best pricing, so on and so forth. So we've seen definitely high turnover on this commission. We've seen some infighting on the commission, to be blunt. And we've just seen a lot of things that have occurred that are actually counterproductive to what we want to have this commission do. So at this point, we started looking at ways that we could still kind of entertain what the spirit of that commission was while maybe centralizing the overall day-to-day activities and event planning under the umbrella of the actual city. And so what we would like to see, if you all would be interested in discussing, is whether or not we should pull the remainder of the events that have been under the umbrella of the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission. And I do say the remainder because there are several that the city has already taken over. The holiday tree lighting and parade has been done by the city now for the last several years, quite successfully, I would like to say. I am a little partial, but I think it's been really great for the community. So kind of taking all of that back in and having that centralized and overseen by one specific staff member, and as events come up, we would then put calls out through our social media platforms and other outlets to try to pull in different individuals, you know, from the community as they would like to participate for ad hoc committees, so on and so forth. So that would help to regulate consistency. We would be able to really continue to put on these fabulous events for the community, which we're trying to do more and more of, best vendor pricing, but still being completely inclusive of the community and drawing on different strengths, which would allow more than five people to participate throughout the year. So with that said, I would like to pass it to you all and let you guys continue this dialogue and ask you to provide us some direction on how to move forward.
Do we have any public comments? Anybody would like to speak to this item? Ms. Eastman?
I sat on the commission for three years, and I agree with Doria. It definitely needs to be restructured. And I think it's a great idea. So I just wanted to tell you that. Okay?
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this item? The only thing I'd like to add to is a little history. This commission started as a parks commission many, many years ago, and it got morphed into nearly 2000, late 90s, early 2000. Jan might know a little more about that, but it got morphed into the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, I believe under Mary Waucher. And it was going to be focused a lot more on art, not so much on the parks. And then the division kind of got construed over time. And again, it does take up a lot of staff time because it becomes as a commission appointed by the city council, it becomes a Brown Act, and a lot of work has to be done. So when we started looking at this and talking about the city manager's office, they came up with this idea that you could get more people involved under an ad hoc committee, which wouldn't be structured under Brown Act, and have more people to be of input on this expertise. So I thought it was a fantastic idea, but we wanted to hear it from the public on whether this was going to be a hard act or not. So going from there, Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I too like this idea. I think it streamlines things. I think it, it does, it moves things forward. I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions if I could. If you're looking at centralizing this under a staff person, I'm going to assume that it's the very capable Ms. Cernic is going to be heading this up.
You would be assuming correctly, so this would all go under Roberta.
And is this going to be an additional, major additional to her, to her staff time that is going to detract from other things?
So to be quite frank, you know, a lot of the events, Roberta's already overseeing them. And so Lynn Paul currently is the staff liaison for the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission. So she is the liaison currently, kind of assisting through the various events and such. So while it will put a little bit more on Roberta's plate overall, it's essentially just shifting from one staff person to another, which isn't a bad thing. Lynn does a fantastic job, so this isn't a knock on Lynn at all. But it takes all of the event planning and puts it underneath the staff person that already has the vendor contacts, so on and so forth. And I would also like to add, while Lynn is the current liaison, Roberta still does get involved ancillary, you know, as an ancillary piece to the, what the CCAC does, and that's for different flyer, you know, approvals and so on and so forth. So this is kind of a natural progression to Roberta. And while it is adding slightly to the overall events, if we are going to be inclusive and invite community members in, which we obviously would like to do, I think it's just a natural progression that will, that she'll be able to bring all of her lovely expertise to.
Okay. And I agree with you, and Ms. Cernic is certainly Wonder Woman when it comes to this, and deserves all of the accolades, and I'm sure she'll do a fantastic job with it. You brought into the question, though, that the next question that I had was encouraging community folks to get involved with this. How do you envision doing that? And we do have a hard enough time finding interested people who want to be on the commission. Are we going to find enough interested people to want to do this kind of activity as well? I'm hoping we do, but how are you envisioning soliciting that? Are you, you know, is it an event-by-event thing, or once a year, we have a planning commission or a planning session kind of thing?
So the way that we're envisioning it is that we would do this on an event-by-event basis, because the goal is to draw on different strengths of different members of the community. So I think that we're going to get different volunteers for veterans types of events than we're going to get for a holiday event, or an event that's drawn towards kids, or something of that nature. So we would want to do it event-by-event. And while we obviously want that participation, I think the important thing is the event is going to go on regardless of whether or not that participation is there. And that's one of the issues that we have seen historically. Now, I do want to say this because I think that this is important to mention. We have really, really good commissioners that have sat on this commission. Donna Wardine and Barbara Easton are sitting out there. They have been the embodiment of what you want to see in this, in these commissioners. However, we have had commissioners in the past that have literally been in charge of a subcommittee and have dropped out of the committee without passing on that information to another committee member, and the event didn't go on. So while we want that involvement, and we are going to use all of, to answer your question, we're going to use every means available, social media, at the council meeting, having signup sheets, so on and so forth, regardless of whether they want to participate. We want them to. The event's going to go forward because Roberta will have additional internal staff, like we do for our Christmas events and everything else, that can keep that ball rolling. And I think that that is the most important thing is, regardless of what happens, the community is still going to get to have these events no matter what.
All right. We know that the CCAC in the past has done a number of smaller events, and you're still anticipating keeping the number of those things up, such as the summer concert series, the, all of those kind of things as well.
So the major events that, that, first of all, we're going to be doing and look back at all of the events that they have done. So all of the holidays, I think, are definitely key. So we're going to see Veterans Day, Memorial's Day. I think we would like to probably discuss whether or not the MLK event would be appropriate to bring back that used to be under their purview. As far as some of these newer events, like the Jamming in the Desert, so on and so forth, I would like to kind of look at those on a case-by-case basis and see if it would be best to move those forward, or maybe we can spin that idea off and do something that may be a little bit more creative. So to answer that question, I would ask council to work with us internally as we kind of set this program up and then bring it back to you to tell us what you would like to see. The goal would be to take these events on, but then continue to do more, add more. So we're not just, you know, like, this is the template and all we're doing. We want to be creative and do more.
Last question, then, in that same vein. The one major thing that I saw CCAC doing a lot of in previous years, didn't, not so much last year, was approval of expenditures from the Art in Public Places Fund. Where do you envision those approval processes going? Is it going to go straight to council? Were you going to run that through Planning Commission? Or how were you envisioning that?
Sure. So I think that we would need to go back and look at the Art in Public Places Ordinance so that this, what we're envisioning would fall in line and be in line with that ordinance. So the approval process, as it sits right now, runs both Art in Public Places, actual art that's coming out of the Art in Public Places Fund, and just general art review through the CCAC. And then CCAC makes a recommendation to the city council for final approval. And so what we would do is take that initial review that the CCAC was doing and bring that into an administrative review under the umbrella of the executive program manager in collaboration with the city manager's office. And then staff would bring that forward to the city council for final approval. You all have always been the final approval step in that process, and that would stay consistent. What we would need to likely do, though, is look at the Art in Public Places Ordinance to ensure that that approval process is consistent with whatever change you all ask us to make.
All right. That answers all of my questions, and I think this is a good way to move forward on this, so I'll be in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, can I be raised or recognized for point of order?
Yes.
I think what we're discussing here is putting the appointments of CCAC on advance pending some other future presentation of a plan. And I think we might be even getting off into a future agenda item that isn't maybe noticed here because this says city council appointments to Community and Cultural Affairs Commission. And I'm glad to see that there's well-thought-out plan, but I'm thinking this might be better discussed or properly discussed at the next meeting, and that the business before the council right now would be, do we want to make these appointments or not make these appointments and have that come back and figure out another plan? And if I don't have that right, let me know. But that's my thinking as I'm sitting here listening to all this.
Thank you. Let's try to stay on that track as the questions revolve around. We were given some choices to make a decision whether we're going to appoint or not appoint tonight. So Ms. Pye?
It is true about 1999, that we've had trouble for a while. We had, when it first started, situation was, this is January, and I'm going to have something done on February 14th. Not enough time for staff to decide. I made a suggestion. They get a budget, and at the beginning of the year, they tell staff everything that they want to do, and everything is planned ahead. It worked for a moment, and then people went back to, on January, we want to have this on February 14th, and everybody had to scramble for it. And then you get into more stuff that was happening. When we're asking staff to do something, we set policy, and we ask staff to do it. If they have a hard time coming, they'll come back to us and say, I need to hire more people. I need to do this. Do you want this policy? So I got a problem when we keep talking about whether or not staff can do something. The purpose of this agenda is to discuss the CACC and then direct staff. So I think our conversation is appropriate.
Ms. Griffith?
I have to say, I don't know the exact numbers. Maybe you do, Gerald. How many people applied for appointments this go-round?
There were six that indicated CCAC as their first choice.
And how many total?
Total, it's, one second.
Okay.
Total, and then six of those who indicated.
I have noticed that the monthly meetings have been canceled due to nothing on the agenda the past several months. So I think there is sufficient interest in the community that people would want to volunteer for events. And I think if that happened on a regular basis, you'll probably get maybe even more people that want to do this. So I'm comfortable with holding off on appointments for further discussion. So I'm comfortable with holding off on appointments for further discussion.
Ms. Betts?
I'm comfortable holding off on further appointments until there's further discussion.
So they're taking a motion to direct staff to come back with a, I don't know if we have to come back with an ordinance to disband the CCAC, or reappoint it as an ad hoc committee, whatever has to be done legally, so. I don't know how that motion would be put, but, I'm sorry, Donna, I closed the public comments already. Did I open public comments on this item? Okay, I'll reopen public comments. Come on in.
Thank you, that's really nice of you. My name is Donna Wardine, and it's been my honor to be a part of the CCAC. But I wholly, I wholly support the transition from the commission as it has been. I think it's been dysfunctional. I don't think everybody had the, the same intensive interest in, in the, in each item, and it wasn't separated very well. So as having the experience, I'm also have been a, an event planner prior to being on CCAC. I support disbanding the CCAC and moving it to a city event, and you have my phone number. Call me if I can help. Thank you, Mayor.
You're on the record now. All right, anyone else? Final call, last call, closing public comments again. I'll make a motion to disband the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission with an alternative committees brought back by the city manager's office for a redrafting of the ordinance. If that makes sense.
I'm looking for just not appointing the- Mr. Mayor, I was looking for not appoint, making the appointments and have staff come back with recommendations regarding the CCAC rather than a direct action tonight to disband it.
I think that's my motion, if you need me to reword it, it was to bring-
I might have misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
Bring back the, yeah, we have to disband it per ordinance, so we have to bring it back to disband it.
We have to bring it back.
We can't disband it tonight, so you're correct. Disbanding, so bringing it back, ordinance to disband and, and alternatives. Thank you, Gerald, you got that, after all that. Is that read, read better?
Yeah, you fixed it, perfect. Okay, thanks, Gerald.
Any other discussion? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number nine is appointment of the delegate, an alternative delegate for the 2020 Southern California Association of Governments Regional Conference and General Assembly. Mr. Soriano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the city is a member of the Southern California Association of Governments. With that being said, before you tonight, the city can select a delegate and an alternate delegate for the SCAG Regional Conference and General Assembly, which is scheduled for May 7th and 8th in Palm Desert. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience like to speak to this item? All right, I know we have two members of council that attend that, Ms. Pye, Mr. Betts. Do you guys wanna fight over who's who?
No.
She doesn't, she doesn't wanna fight over it.
Do you want it?
Who was the delegate last time?
Jan.
You wanna be the delegate again?
If Jan doesn't wanna, Councilwoman Pye doesn't wanna be?
You have seniority ticket.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's a motion, or there will be a motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch-
I make a motion, I'm sorry.
I didn't catch the motion.
You what?
I didn't hear the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Mr. Betts as a delegate and Ms. Pye as the alter, alternate, unless Mr. Griffith or Mr. Gardner wanna jump in there and start a catfight over. No? Sorry, I didn't mean to use the animal reference.
Oh, whoops, sorry. Let me withdraw my motion.
That's fine.
Sorry, withdraw that. You made the motion, not me.
That's fine, I don't think it really matters at this point. Please vote.
I was voting.
Motion passes unanimously.
Future items to be discussed with the city manager's office, anybody in the public that did not speak in the first public comments period would like to speak now? I see none. Yes, you may.
Just say something about commissions. When people come and talk to me about commissions, I ask them if they have attended any meetings. And when they tell me no, I tell them I can't vote for you, 'cause I don't know how interested they are in being on a commission. I, I have some people that said that the planning commission is too long. The planning commission goes deep into what they have to bring to us. We read everything, it could be 300 pages, but they go deep into it. I'm told that police officers should be getting rid of all the homeless, and I don't know why they're doing that. You need to attend meetings. You also have the opportunity to do a drive-along with the police department. So if you haven't attended a meeting, and, and I'll read everything, but if you haven't attended a meeting, then I, when you talk to me, I will tell you, "I can't do it." I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else? We are adjourned.